Appeal to consider case number 25 to 13 C appeal by Michael Keshin for Rayleigh and Associates, special use permit and site plan approval for the education facility, primary or secondary, Councilman Tyler Farrell's district. And so, Madam Clerk, do we just ask them to come up front? Or what do we proceed to do from there?
Yeah, I have two public comments. Michael Kelch.
Good afternoon. Michael Kelch with Rayleigh and Associates, 4913 Shipp Road. First of all, I want to thank you all for hearing us today. We really appreciate it. I'm the engineer representing Mercy Christian Academy. I'm not going to speak about the school as much. I'm going to let the board, there's board members here to speak on the school. I think it's a wonderful thing what they're doing in Shreveport, and we'll hope that you all consider our appeal so this thing can move forward. I am going to speak more on the procedural and the engineering aspects of this. So as you know, we went to the NPC board a couple of months ago, and they heard the case, and they approved the case with stipulations. Well, first of all, they approved this, they approved. Normally, we work good with the NPC. I want to commend our Shreveport NPC. They do a very good job on working with the engineers, on working with the public and explaining. The staff is great, explaining us through the process. And we've, Rayleigh and Associates has submitted hundreds if not, you know, cases. And we've worked with the NPC a lot. Personally, I've worked with them fifty to a hundred times as well, and had nothing but good things to say to them. And, but on this particular case, I think there was some confusion going through the process and with the board. And so, when we went to the public hearing, they voted to approve our case with no stipulations. And so, my client and I left, as we always do. We left the meeting, and after we left the meeting, they brought the case back up and voted on it again with five stipulations. And I'll mention those stipulations in a second. And so, we didn't, we really didn't have the opportunity to explain ourselves to the board, to the NPC board, and that's why we're here today. So those five stipulations, I don't know if you all know them or if you all want me to read them. The first one was to meet the city traffic engineers' request to place the restrictions. If traffic backs up in the neighborhood, a change in the site plan will be required. We have no, as an engineer, and I don't think our clients have any issue with that stipulation. I mean, safety is of top priority. And if traffic starts to back up, then we'll adjust our site plan or the plan as needed. I don't think we'll have that issue in this case. There's eighty, there's a parking lot with eighty-plus parking spaces, and I think only about seventeen to twenty would be required. And so, there's plenty of room for stacking in this parking lot. And, you know, we can do certain things to make sure that that stacking stays in the parking lot and doesn't, you know, go out into the adjacent streets. The second stipulation was to require the avenue to provide bicycle parking on site meeting. You know, we have no issue with the second stipulation with bicycle parking. That's no problem at all. The two stipulations that we are concerned with are: the school shall be limited to fifty students, and increase in the students will require the special use permit to be reevaluated. That's a big, big concern for our clients because they're pumping in, or, you know, and I'll let him address this, but, you know, millions of dollars to renovate this church that they're turning into a school. And they can't make that investment with, you know, the stipulation of, as it goes past fifty students, that they have to get reapproved. And just a background, the school plan is two hundred max students. They want to be K through, they're going to start out as just elementary, kindergarten first, and then eventually move to K through eighth. So it'll never be a high school, and it'll never, you know, around two hundred students is what they're going for. The fourth, an increase in the number of classrooms provided will require the special use permit to be reevaluated. This is another big concern because I think that the number of classrooms that they approved was five, and there's plenty of room at this school in acreage around it to add on, to make more classrooms. And five classrooms presents a problem for the future of this school. And then the fifth was the floor plan requirement being provided to the staff. Again, that's not a problem. I don't think five would be an issue. It's an existing building, so I don't know why it would be necessary. But we can, we can provide a floor plan if that's necessary. Anyways, yeah, I'm just the engineer. I wanted to go through kind of the stipulations and why from an engineering point. Traffic, we don't think is an issue in this area. You know, I don't think, I think the church probably had more traffic than this school is. And then there might, you know, in the AM peak hour and PM peak hour, if traffic becomes a concern, then, you know, a police officer or somebody can be there to alleviate that traffic, just as it is all across schools, all over the city. So with that, I'm done with my spiel, and I'll let the board members kind of give an explanation on the school and what great things it's doing for Shreveport. Thank you all.
Thank you. I'm Jason Monarch.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for your time. Am I able to put something on here that you all can see? I just dropped it? Yeah, so Jason Monarch, I'm just a board member at Mercy Christian Academy. Jessica Elston here is the founder, owner, husband, are from Shreveport. Jessica trained as an educator. Her husband trained as a minister, and he's currently a counselor. And, you know, when Jessica moved back to Shreveport, she just had on her heart that there were some kids here in our community that were not being serviced where they were at, but at the same time couldn't afford maybe a private education that they needed. And so, she started a wonderful school called Mercy Christian Academy. We just wrapped up our third year. Broadmoor Baptist has generously hosted us for the last three years, free of charge. But we're at a point where we want to get our own home. The school is donor-funded. Ninety percent of the children that attend receive a scholarship. It's a beautiful thing. And North Louisiana Baptist Association has been kind enough to donate us a recently closed church, Shreve City Baptist Church, at 2810 Knight Street. And we want to get over there, and we want to keep another building from being closed. We want to pump a bunch of money into it, and we want to give some kids a great education at the same time. And so, we're asking for your help here. But, you know, as you can understand, the school this year was thirty-eight kids. We're adding a grade a year, the goal of getting to a K through eight. And as I'm sure you know, we can't go over there and spend a couple million dollars with the risk of, you know, running back through this again. And so, we're asking for your help.
Thank you. No, I wanted to know if you were coming up to speak? Yes, please do. Good afternoon. You could state your name.
Hey, I'm Jessica Elston.
Hi, Jessica.
I have this because I'm speaking at our closing benediction tonight. So I don't have a prepared speech for you.
We're actually not looking for a prepared speech. Just give us an overview of yours, of the school as it just did.
Sure. So I am a public educator for many years. I've worked in nearly every high school in the city. Born and raised here. My husband is born and raised here. Left for a little while to go to Massachusetts and got my master's in education and decided to come back. We want, we want people to do that. And have been working in the public school for nearly fifteen years and saw things in the high school level that should not be. Students who can't read, can't write. And so, I decided that I would start something totally different. And I wanted it to be done for the glory of God. Money is an issue for many people to attend a private Christian school. And so, we decided that we would be a donor-driven school. Like Jason said, over ninety-two percent of our students receive a scholarship. Over fifty percent receive the gold scholarship, which is a coverage of seventy-five percent of their tuition cost. Mercy Christian truly is a miracle. And we don't want you to stop that, right? We don't want this stipulation to end the traction that we've had. So we want to keep moving forward, and we want to be able to renovate this building that was given to us. I want to be able to go to the parents tonight at closing benediction and tell them that we are, you know, moving forward with this. We will have fifty-two students at our school next year. Like Jason said, we've had thirty-eight this year. We have grown slow and steady. The first year, we had ten. The second year, last year, we had twenty-seven. This year, we have thirty-eight, and next year, God willing, we will have fifty-two. Again, with nearly all of them receiving a scholarship, there is a lot of interest in Mercy Christian for many reasons. But we have remained fervent on that cap of being a small school at two hundred students max. We want to see our goals multiply. We don't want to keep adding to our facility. We want to be an inspiration to other people to start schools, microschools, small schools like ours in another district. And so, you can rest assured that we will stick to our cap of two hundred.
So your school is open to all students?
It is, yes.
And so, right now, you have thirty-plus. You're looking to have fifty-two in the upcoming school year.
That's right.
And so, you seem to be on a pretty big what? With this. Congratulations on taking a particular initiative where you solve deficits to try to change that. Yes, sir.
I was just going to say, yeah, and so, the building, Shreve City Baptist, it's twenty-one thousand square feet, four and a half acres. So it's a huge property. You know, we're never gonna, I don't foresee us adding on to add classrooms. There's tons of green space, tons of parking, exactly.
Thank you, Ma'am Judge. Ma'am, I'd like to say the passion that you have, the passion that you all have, I can't vote against you all. I just give you all everything. If you all would have five hundred, I would vote for it because of the way the world is going. And people are wondering and trying to figure out how to straighten it out is to bring Jesus in, have the love of Christ in your heart. And so, I can feel that passion from you all. So I would say two hundred. I wouldn't give you all that, two thousand, because that's what we need.
I think the other part, too, is that your school is open for all students, and that gives a base for parents that have children with exceptional needs to be a part of a unit that is a smaller unit. So so many need direct attention from there. You'll to Councilman Tyler Farrell before I call Mr. Clark.
Yeah, it's not my district, but I'm just saying.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, fellow council members. I just, again, I wanted to make sure that everybody understood that obviously your educational platform is that you're open to all students who wish to participate in Christian education. I think it's unanimous that we don't have enough Christian education, you know, amongst us. And I think this is very much an attribute to you. What is the application process? And how do you go about recruiting, if that's the correct word, recruiting new students?
Yeah, it's actually quite exciting. Mercy Christian is what's called a grown school. We have five values that we use to look for a candidate. We want students who are global. We want students who are restful. We want students who are original, worshipful, and natural. That might not mean a lot to you right now, but if you have two hours for coffee, I can go through each of those with you. But the G is the one that I wanted to touch on, global. We intentionally take flyers and we trans, excuse me, we use Google Translate, and we make flyers in Burmese, in Spanish, Chinese, and we go to various parts of the city because we try to intentionally hold space in our school for kids coming from all over the world. That's just one part of our enrollment process. I don't want to get too much in the weeds with you, but it's quite exciting. We are trying to market ourselves to a wide swath of Shreveport, Bossier residents, and we've been successful in that. We'll have ten countries represented in our school this next year. Fifty-two kids, ten different countries from ahead of school that got a D in Spanish at LSU in Baton Rouge. So we're, we're doing a great job marketing ourselves in the area. So we go out and we try to reach all different communities. And then from there, there's a simple online application. It's in English and in Spanish. It's all online. And then again, from there, we meet with the families. We get translators if we need to, and I interview them to see if there are families that are in line with our mission and we can serve them. We have children with many different needs at Mercy Christian, and we are able to properly meet their needs because we are a small school. We do have a waiting list. We have people that we have to turn away. But the good thing about me being an educator for so many years is I know what schools, both public and private, are good to serve children that we might not be able to serve. So we really do act not just as interviewees, excuse me, interviewers. We, if we are not able to help a child, will direct them in where they should go. We've had numerous families reach back out to us and say, "You told me where I should go, and you were right. It was a blessing to me."
I want to thank you all. I talked to Mr. Monarch about this, about what the school was doing. And for me, I think that revitalizing this church in an area that seems to be declining right now is excellent. I think it's a good location to play into what your mission is as well because it's a very diverse neighborhood. And I'm the father of a hearing impaired child, and it was very difficult for her to acclimate into public schools. And we had to send her to a private school, and it was costly. It was costly with two kids. But she was able to go and graduate with honors from Setonary and be productive because of that. And a mission like this is something that is needed in Shreveport because sometimes kids just need a little extra something that they're not going to get in the public school system. So I appreciate what you all are doing. I am, I do have some concerns about the NPC process and how this was able to be brought back up. And, but we could, yeah, we can, we can talk about that at a different point after everybody had left, and then we have stipulations on it. Because maybe those stipulations wouldn't have been there if, if his representation had been there to say, "Look, this is what we're doing," and this. Because I hate that you all are having to go through this. But we'll hear what Mr. Clark has to say. But, but thank you. And I see no need not to support this. If your goal is two hundred children, I mean, you could have a revival there. You know, Pastor Green has that many at, whenever he has a fish fry. So I think that'd be all right.
Just to be clear, I know we've talked a lot since Michael got up here. What we're appealing is, we don't have a problem with stipulations one and two.
It's three of five.
Three through five is what we, what we'd like to remove.
Which is the limit, the limit of students?
So, yes, yes, sir.
And the classroom space?
Yes, sir. So number three is fifty. We'd like to raise that to two hundred. Number four is an increase in the number of classrooms. Of course, the classrooms are already built. There's twenty-one thousand square feet. And I think they only approved five classrooms, so we'd like to increase that. And then number five was provide a floor plan in the school to be administratively approved. There again, I don't totally understand now because the school's already built.
Did you discuss your goal number at your meeting when you made your presentation of two hundred? Did you give them that goal number of two hundred?
With the, to the NPC?
Yes.
Yes, I answered a variety of questions via email, and that was one of them.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And just, so let's just say fifty students, five classrooms. Obviously, that large of a building would be way underutilized, right?
Exactly.
With rather the utility cost. Mr. Clark?
It's tough coming up here after all of those comments about the school. I'd just like to share with you that the NPC board, all the NPC staff had no problems with the school. We were very supportive of the school. The reason that we made a stipulation on the special use permit is because, as you know, around the city, schools generate traffic and parents coming to pick up students, queuing up, backing out into the streets, blocking streets, and so forth. And so, we put that stipulation in because they're starting out with fifty students that will give an opportunity to evaluate if the site can handle more students or more parents. The traffic engineers all over here had some concerns about how the traffic would circulate from the school. But I just want to make real clear, we're not fighting against a Christian school. We're trying to protect the community. There are always two sides to every story. We're trying to protect those persons that live in that area that if traffic gets to a point where it's not moving and not circulating, they're locked in, and it's not fair to them to be locked in. But that would not mean that when they come back, we would deny the application. It would just mean we would work with them and the traffic engineer to try to solve the problems of traffic.
Okay, so this is my question to that. We have existing schools right now that have a traffic nightmare, that have a barrage of traffic at our public schools right now. You can go on Seventh Street, and there's a line at University who's had a nightmare forever. Byrd is another one with the majority of the students there. If they're willing to say that, okay, this, we know that we want to grow because I think in reading in this packet, that they say what they're willing to work with and how they're willing to engage when it comes to the traffic, they turn around and work with law enforcement the best way that they can, along with traffic enforcement. At least it gives them the time to come up with the plan, to be able to engage that. Well, I don't want that to be a deficit of us saying, "No, we don't want to open up the school because of this," when we have existing schools already with traffic jams. We hadn't done anything about them.
But you have to take into consideration that we have learned from those schools some of the negative things that could possibly happen.
Well, we, but we understand that too, Mr. Clark. But what I'm saying is that they are still there. They're still existed from what we've learned from. I'm looking at this twenty thousand one square feet of property here, and I would be remiss in asking them, since we know that this is a concern, and they know that they anticipate growth with their school, and they have a waiting list. This is something that could be the stipulation that they work on in this process of doing this. And that we allow to give them that opportunity then to come back and say, "Okay, if we're not following through on here, this is the other thing that happened, and we could not approve continuous growth." We need to be able to work collaboratively with this because this is a large site of what we're looking at. And if they don't want to do that, then this is, these are, this is the position that we take as it relates to that.
And I'm just sharing with the council that everything you say, we've taken into consideration. There's nothing we can do about Byrd. There's nothing we can do about the other schools. We could start the process now to ensure that neighborhoods are not subjected to the traffic being backed up. I'm not arguing with anybody. That was the rationale that the NPC utilized from out of recommendation. And no one has any intentions of denying them to go forward. I think that if there's a stipulation that they have to come back and sit down and show how they're going to deal with the traffic that will be generated for a hundred, hundred fifty, two hundred students, it only serves as a process to ensure that the traffic moves in an orderly fashion. And once you take this away, there's nothing we can do.
Mr. Clark, if this building was to remain a church, would they have the same stipulation?
Probably not.
Because that church could have a thousand members.
But it's not being a, I mean, you know, churches have a parking ratio.
They can meet every day.
They have a minimum parking ratio of every five seats, I think it is, requires a parking space. In this case, we're just trying to support the church and the school and ensure that it doesn't turn into a situation that then the citizens start calling and saying that, you know, "Do we have traffic backed up every day? We can't get out of driveways. We're blocked into our neighborhood." And then we have no authority to do anything. But if that stipulation stays in place, we can sit down with the church of school, I'm sorry, sit down with the school and talk, and the traffic engineer, and talk about remedies that could be incorporated in order to mitigate some of these problems. It would not keep them from increasing their student enrollment. It just requires them to come back, and so it slows down nothing. It just requires them to come back, sit down, show us the plans of how you're going to incorporate this additional traffic and ensure that the traffic is circulated.
So I'm looking at the map, and there are no houses directly back off into that street. You've got Georgia, Carolina, and East Washington that run east and west. But then you've got Wayman, and then Wayman goes on down. So there's several entrances and exits. Then you've got Triple Barstool Highway that is a, that is a service road. So there's, there's plenty of, I'm not disagreeing because I'm not a traffic engineer, but my concern is exactly what they're saying. If they're about to make a major investment by donors to bring this school to a certain capacity, I would be reluctant to invest millions of dollars if I knew I could only get to fifty students. So I, you know, I typically don't disagree with you, Mr. Clark, but on this one, I think I do. You know, I just think that, I just, at one point, my daughter went to Shreve Island. You talk about a nightmare getting in and out of Shreve Island, and those people back up to the streets, having to get out of the driveway and everything. This, to me, and to Councilman Jackson... This, to me, and, and to Councilman Jackson's, uh, point as well, I mean, they could have a revival every day and have two, three hundred, you know, people. So, I, I just, um, I don't see this being a problem. So I, I'm gonna vote, um, to, um, whatever we're voting, however we're voting, I'm voting that way. Here's a board.
I have one question. Uh, Councilman Talafaro?
Sure.
Th- this is your district.
Yes, sure.
Uh, do you have a problem, do you see a traffic issue or? Will, will, will you be okay if there becomes a traffic issue?
No, I think, I think they are responsible enough to, to work any issues that come before them out. I mean, we're not talking about exponential growth, you know, within the next, I mean, I'm sure that they would love exponential growth. But it seems that their ba- their business plan is that we're, we're taking on fifty more students or a total of fifty students and maybe in two years they, they get seventy. I mean, we're not talking about an influx of a traffic issue, you know, within the next two or three years. I mean, it'd be great that we reach two hundred, but as far as everything that they have provided for us, and I regret that they didn't have enough opportunity to actually engage, um, with the questions that we're entertaining now. But I, I see no reason to not allow them to, uh, proceed forward. I think it would be, um, I think fifty, fifty students, five classrooms is, is underutilizing the potential of helping a lot of students
Right.
in, in this particular area, the area of good Christian education and, uh, what it could do for our entire city.
And, and listening to Ms. Robin, what they want to provide is more direct learning, so you're gonna need classrooms because depending on what grade level that you get in, you don't want to overcrowk that classroom. And you take away from the entire learning process
Yeah, you're absolutely correct.
of what they, of what they're wanting to do. And so since you all know what the situation is when it comes to the traffic, and I would say that that, as you said, public safety is number one priority and it is. We don't want to impede upon the neighbors, uh, in that area. Um, so you work along with their plan, work along with, uh, SPD, work along with the CLOs in that area, allow them to introduce themselves for those that are in that area. So you will have a workable partnership when it comes there to totally enhance and foster learning. So, with that, if there's nothing else, you're okay?
I've, I've seen traffic in that area, um, there used to be a very vibrant polling location back in the day. And the flow of traffic moves well, they are still gonna vote to approve it also.
I just wanted to share with you why.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clark.
We appreciate it.
Thank you. So, Miss, Councilman Talafaro?
Yes.
About to make a motion?
Make a motion to accept, uh, the, you know, approval, you know, of the recommendation for the, uh, the school to proceed as, as they speak.
Minus stipulations. Minus stipulations.
What, what Attorney Edwards is gonna say for me?
What you gonna say, Attorney Edwards, because we want to do it minus stipulations?
Right, I think, I, um, from the tenor of the conversation, what it sounded like to me was that you were interested in, um, affirming the NPC's decision without stipulations three and four. So...
Three, four, and five.
The appeal, the appeal is written, states we have no issues with stipulations one, two and five. We only have, however, we don't deem stipulations three and four to be necessary. That's the appeal as written. If that is, I, um, you can accept the recommendation of the NPC without, without, without whichever stipulations you want to exclude. But the appeal is written is that they are only appealing three and four.
What about five? I thought y'all mentioned five as well.
Sorry, Michael Cowes, Railing Associates. So five, the stipulation was to provide a floor plan, uh, well, this is an existing building. I, I think maybe in the appeal, I'd say we can if we have to. And we'd have to go in probably for, you know, pull up an old building plan if we can find one and that would be what we provided because they're not, you know, they're not adding on to the building.
Think if they have to do that, they can come back, you know, to the NPC.
So, yeah.
Yeah, the only issue, the only thing that I would say is that since you all know that a concern is traffic, is that you all would work with law enforcement, um, and traffic engineering and neighbors to remedy how you all are going to do that as growth continues.
Yes, and, and I believe they're, they're willing to. And stipulation one still states that if it backs up into the neighborhood, then a, a, a plan will have to be...
Yeah, so I think if you would, you would move on that already and already have that factor in place and not wait for that, just to go in, and then whatever you have to tweak
Yes, ma'am.
during that time, then you would move with that. Okay?
So, yeah, I, I guess moving forward, get rid of stipulations three, four and five and just go with one.
The, the one thing that I'd add to that is we talked about the neighbors. Maybe once y'all, before y'all open the school year, maybe call your neighbors, you know?
Correct.
And say, "This is how we're gonna do our, our carpool line, this is, you know, we wanna, you know, where this doesn't," because trust me, something will snowball on a Facebook page and then Councilman Brooks and Councilman Talafaro are getting call after call after call.
Agreed.
Sure.
So I, uh, with all that now, clear as mud, all right? I think, I think what you're looking for is a motion to modify the NPC recommendation and adopt without stipulations...
Three, three, four, and four.
Three, four, and five. Yeah, I think you should say into the mic, ditto or something.
Ditto what Attorney Edwards said.
I agree with what Attorney Edwards proposed.
Second.
Second.
So, moved by Councilman Talafaro, second by the chair and Councilman Bootcher. I think with so many of every council member, they're sitting up there, there any discussion? Let's vote.
That passes at seven, congratulations.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair.
Yes.
You have to take a moment of personal, a moment of personal...
Councilman Jackson.
I'm going to pass it to Seven as the councilwoman say. Move, Madam, Mr. Mayor.
I, I had the privilege of knowing Ms. Elston since she conceived this idea. And when she said it was truly a miracle, it's truly a miracle, so thank you very much.
You have that, uh, passed with seven in the support of the mayor. All right, congratulations. Are, he, uh, gear with the kindergarten there, Councilman Brooks? We shall see. Are there any other appeals, Madam Clark?
No, ma'am.
Are there any reports from officers, boards and committees?